There y'all, I put the flag, the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Yeah.
Comment on me was. I would say, you know, the other person in the room.
Yep.
I always say, on these, all of the residents present.
Yep, no doubt, though. Well, thank you for being here, representing. Um, all right.
Your daughter is a kid.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Yeah. Sounds good, sounds good. So I'm gonna open, I'm gonna call the, uh, select board of the town of Denver Scottan order for March 5th. Um, we're gonna, uh, start with a budget workshop, um, meeting, so, um. I would like to mention, so we are minus a board member, and I think, Tom, you said you've got to cut out at five.
Six, no, five or six.
Oh, five of six, okay, okay, so you're, you're okay for a while, yeah. All right, so, I, before we get started, I would like to suggest, so, there's a lot of items in the budget, I know we've all been asking questions and paring through it, um. There's some items in there that I, you know, if any one of us was not here tonight, um, I would like to table some stuff, so we all have an opinion or get the best, so, um, hopefully, I think Josh is gonna be here next week, so I think there's some items in here that we can, that are low hanging fruit, so to speak, that we can make our recommendations for, but that does not mean we can't have a discussion over the other ones and, but we'll probably table some stuff until we can have the full whole board, does that make sense? All right, cool, cool. Um, Andy, you wanna start with anything, or?
I gave you a, a couple of pages here, and these were just following up on some of the questions or requests from the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
The first couple of pages, uh, I just went back into the charter to see what the charter says we must have for personnel departments and committees. And some of that informs and creates a budget dollar value, um, and then on the next page, the contractual obligated things, I did, I asked Daryl, I did have a slightly challenging time, kind of drawing a line around, what are we, what are we considering contractual, like, do I go into state statute and find what are we obligated to do? From that perspective, to look at our policies and our ordinances, or our ordinances, and the voters approve this, we must do this now, and I, I generally tried to keep it mostly to, um, you know, contracts we've signed with, with entities or individuals to perform service, and the only thing I did that was probably a little bit extra would have been eleven, our per, our policy identifies health and retirement benefit amounts, and that's, I include it because it is a big amount.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The next page, um, shows the personnel costs by type, you know, whether it's wage or overtime, or, or the retirement, health, et cetera, um, as a dollar value for the past few years, and then as a percentage. Um, I did do another one, but didn't include it as, um, how these costs are divided amongst departments, and I said, I did not include it on this page and should have.
No, this is just, yeah, this is the lump sum of every, by the loaded cost.
This is great, Andy.
And then the last page, um, spoke to the HM Payson.
Oh, yeah.
Um, account, um, these are the, the small charity funds or trust account we've, we have invested in there, um, I am working with Cheryl to identify, and you can see that, that there's the FY twenty-three estimated balance in each of those accounts.
Okay.
We are still waiting for the final audit, it should be closer now that the school is complete, um, the HM Payson statement showed one point eight million dollars six months later, December thirty-first of twenty-three, and two point, just over, almost two point one million at the end of December of twenty-four in HM Payson invested for our accounts, but I'm not sure, you know, what the town put in, in principle, back when it, HM Payson took the accounts on in twenty thirteen. And so I'm trying to piece back and figure out, did we put, say, general fund money in there, um, which is possible, um, so we're trying to build back.
Nine thirty-nine included in the two million, one, two point one.
Yeah, so there's, oh, there's about a million dollars that is ours, but I'm, I'm just not sure where it.
In there, something, but we don't.
Whether it's general fund or, you know, another reserve account, and so we're just trying to piece together what makes up the principal.
Yep.
Balance of.
Did you have a question?
Because Andy had asked me a question about a couple of these.
Yeah.
Bequests, uh, the sidewalk bequest was ultimately was determined to be to go towards the town's matching funds of a sidewalk project, okay?
Particular project?
Yeah, so, all right, um, gentleman gave us died, wanted to leave two hundred thousand dollars to the town, I was asked, what might we like to do with that? And at the time, we were, we were staring down to a Jell-O front from the top of the hill, and I said, uh, towards sidewalk would be wonderful, and it was decided by the family that the, the man would love that, so it, so it went that way. When they wrote then the bequest, it specified sidewalk, um, because we were already dealing with some state funds to do that project, we decided the best use of that money was to put it towards our matching component of that and similar sidewalk projects, I don't know if that part of that is written into the into the bequest or not, but it's what, all right, it, it was thought that rather than going to choose the in, you know, one Tuesday on two hundred thousand dollars worth of five million dollars worth of sidewalks, we could make more happen that way.
Andy, do we have any money set aside yet for the, for the ladder truck?
Oh, yeah. About a half a million dollars in that account.
Okay, is that in that account?
Not in HM Payson, it's not invested that way.
Okay, it's in someplace else, but we have started to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we're still gonna try to get them to come in and give us a presentation on how their.
Um, we can, I was under the impression we were gonna have the finance committee come back together and, um.
Oh, right.
Do it via that.
Yeah, sure.
But.
I'm, I'm not talking about immediately, but at some point, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, I think I had shared previously, um, where they were in their last quarter report that showed how it's performed at a previous board meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's something more specific.
Well, just how they do their allocation, you know, what, what their investment philosophy is, uh, just like to get a little more transparency.
Yeah, I think some of that is driven, well, I mean, how they as an organ, as a company choose to invest, maybe slightly changing, you know, they've bought or sold to another bigger one, we do have an investment policy that guides, guides that, it's been a while since it's been reviewed probably, but, um, I did talk to Bill Brewer today, he is willing to still serve in that on that committee, if we're to be bringing it back together, so, um, he did recommend think another individual that I'll, I can reach out to and see, so I gotta figure out who on that list formerly is still interested in serving in, in that, but he thought it would be good to come back together, I did tell him that we're out for RFP on banking services, that the change in HM Payson, you know, might, you know, warrant a good time for us, the group to come back together and just look at it and, and ask questions about, does that, should that go out to bid, just to see what else is going on, or who else is out there? And, you know, all, all those things he said might be good to talk about it.
Good idea, yeah.
Yep, once the dust clears on this process.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for doing this, Andy, put your stuff together, yeah. So it's, uh.
So, can I ask, the last question, so.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Under the total budget of expenses, whatever it is, four million or five million, we're numbers here. What percentage of it is already locked down?
I didn't go back through and look at the dollar value of all of those things, I mean, we did do the personnel costs and what was presented this year as a
Hmm, yep.
Total cost of one point seven for all the personnel related costs, um, million, so that's out of the four point five, so about a quarter is personnel related.
Okay.
Um. We can go back through the websites of balance of ten grand, go to the website to finish being built. Go back through and try and pull out the non-waged items like solid waste, we can pull out and see what that is, the assessors costs is on one line in the assessors budget, I just didn't put them next to it.
Yeah.
And that's where, again, I'm having a hard time, is where do I draw that line in terms of like, what do we, what must.
Oh, well, it's tricky because we.
So, yeah, I guess I'm asking what, what all this contractual stuff adds up to.
What the, what the.
Centers of the budget.
Yeah.
Including, including, I would, personnel as well.
Well, I mean, you can look at some of the big ones, right, um, solid waste went up, uh, what, fifty, was it fifteen thousand, or was it eleven thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He's not talking about the change, he was talking about the absolute value.
So, so it's, you know, if the total expenses are, let's say, four point five million.
Yeah, I got you.
Is four million, I've been already locked in.
Oh, right, I, I need more help, actually, honestly, I need to understand, where do I draw my boundary, because if I only look at, what if we almost every contract has an out. Right, and so if, at the end of the day, come back to like, even a contract, sure, it's contracted, but we still have an, an out in some of them, it's like, we could choose on, on thirty days notice to terminate our assessors agent contract, for example, or, you know, solid waste, that we could say, well, we just wanna find a different solution, right?
Yeah, but it's no. But then, you know, the solid waste is not practical, we're not gonna find another ambulance or.
Bad example, maybe, but you go to state statute, you go to ordinances, and like, personnel, like, people in positions to perform certain state required tasks, like, honestly, and I'm trying to go through and try and find the answer to what you're asking for.
Yeah.
I do have a challenge with how do I draw a line around, like, to me, the school seems like a relatively good example here, a lot of people that I hear from tend to say, well, the state says they have to do all this stuff, it's like, there's not really a point, so, well, yes, no.
Yeah.
But there's also things for us that we're obligated to perform, the state says we must do, our ordinances say we must do, so, do I try to go back and say, if you're trying to find out what's discretionary, and what could we cut back? I have to go back to, in my mind, and say, what are we obligated to perform, and you're really talking about going line by line, and we aren't building a budget you know, based on objectives in that, at that level, in that detail.
Well, something.
So that's where I'm having a hard time, not trying to be difficult, but.
Yeah.
How do I accurately give you what you're looking for to say we're obligated to, and still meet statute and, and have staff to perform all of what we've imposed upon ourselves through charter ordinance?
Yeah. You, you look at something as simple as, um, uh, you know, advertising and posted, right, so you, you know, you can look at it as this non-contractual, but we have to advertise for meetings, you know, ahead of time, so there's all these little things, like, you can look at a, I'm just, I'm, don't quote me the numbers, but you look at it like a two thousand dollar budget for, for, for postage and, and advertising, and go, well, it's not a contractual obligation, however, we have to advertise meetings and, you know, so there has to be a budget line there in order to do that, same thing with posters, one thing that we turn around, like, you've got things like, um, uh, what did we talk about, the tax bill, you know, so the tax bill, you, you're not obligated to send tax bills out, um. We could, you know, you could pair the posters back and not send tax bills, I guarantee you, the first thing that's gonna happen is, where's my tax bill, that's what I pay taxes for. You know, so, and it helps, you know, we, the folks get them, so there's, it's, that's where it gets tricky, it's like, where do you, there's, there's genuine, so, I, I could go on, but I think the answer to your question, Dan, is the vast majority of this is it's kind of locked in, like, there, there's a.
Well, that's my thing, too, through every single account again.
You, and it's, it's.
It's nickels and dimes.
It's nickels and dimes, and even then, it's shortchanging, it's nickels and dimes to the point where you're looking at like, oh, do I pair, you know, do we, you know, do we not buy stamps, do we not?
Well, I've been thinking, trying to think even a little larger, it's like, I start going through the capital budget and say, oh, I can take ten thousand here, twenty-five thousand there, but, but then you're cutting off.
We, we've done that, yeah, we paired some stuff back last year, we, yeah, and, and, and what, what's happening now, too, if we go back a couple of years is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it, well, like, with capital, um, like, the, the vast majority of those, um, uh, capital, uh, 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 accounts, we had been underfunded, um, to begin with.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, and, and it looked, so it looked good on paper, that like, oh, okay, we're not putting a lot of money here, but they were so underfunded that we would never, they were moot, like, we, we would, you'd get to the point where like, okay, you've got money there, you can't do anything with it, and, and, uh, you can't afford to fix anything, you can't afford to invest in it. Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tom, yeah.
To some, to some extent, um, because of the work you've done in this kind of detail, you've sort of made yourself vulnerable to these kind of questions, but also, it may be something that would come up at, at, at a town meeting, like, if we knew, for example, just like he just asked, it would be helpful to say, look, we understand you don't like these increases, however, let me just explain that X dollars, which is this list here, we're gonna contract, contractually bound to, and that's, you know, seventy-two percent of the budget, then, there's another category of, um, um, ordinances and other things that were, were really not discretionary, and then there's this little tiny piece down here, and this is where we can have a discussion, but let us tell you why we, we need this too.
But, you know, and that's, and that's a good point, but what is that little piece, and that's up to us.
Already done this piece.
Right, yeah, yeah, and it's the vast majority of the budget.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
It's right, yeah.
And we would say, oh, there's only two hundred thousand left, what is that, and then we could probably drill down on that, and we would put us in a better position to explain.
Well, I, I think, and, and, yeah, and, and you're, it's a good point, Tom, I think the other way to look at it, too, is like, beyond the contractual obligations is, is it a responsible budget, I mean, that's really what it comes down to, right, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have, always gonna have contractual obligations, and you're always gonna have some discretionary in your budget, um. And then beyond that, we've got to look at, okay, is it responsible, is it a responsible budget, um, I think we can, I think we can all probably agree that we're looking at a fairly responsible budget, it's not, not a lot of crazy stuff.
But then you, if, if that little pie chart. But then you could ask yourselves the next question, you know, what services that we receive currently, are we willing to live without?
Then, that's when, yeah, that's when you have to start digging into, right, do you, okay, do we, you know, do you cut fire department, do you cut police department, do you cut, you cut highway department, right, that's when you start paying, so.
Yeah.
The reality is, whether we like it or not, I mean, we're all paying taxes here, and we all know where it stands, and, and I think whether we like it or not, this is the number that's presented by the town staff, by Andy, that it takes to run the town of this size as a service center.
At this service.
At this service level, as a service center, with being able to invest, I, I be honest with you, we have a revenue issue, more than, I don't think we have a spending, we, we have a revenue issue, so my, my fear is that if we go into, and we start, we pare down a budget, and we look at places, and we pare out two percent, three percent here and there, we're gonna play catch up next year and the year after, it, it, it's, it's, we've, I, we've done this before, and then you look at like, oh, we didn't fund that this year, well, we've got to fund it, you know, we took ten thousand this year, now we have to put twenty thousand in next two years, like, it never.
Fix a road this year, you're gonna have to fix it next year.
It's, it's, it never, you know, never quite get ahead of it, so. Yeah, that's the first, that's the hard part, so, what do they, go ahead, yeah. Yeah, sure, go ahead, we're getting loosey goosey here today.
One of the things that has always made me proud of this town is I have long felt that our budgets were put together, our budgets were not put together as if we were playing with somebody else's money that is pretty much what you have described, that it's, it's, it, it may be, it may look like some odd thing that's not contractual, but that it's always been stuff that we have to do, a little bit of it we have to do because the public insists, but that's the, that's, there you go, that's an obligation, as far, as far as I'm concerned, not if one person insists, but, but if you, if you've got the general sense that that for the most part, the people want this to happen, and, and I've always been very proud of this town, because I know, and I've watched, I watched, I think it was Lincolnville went bankrupt. Uh, you know, and I've never felt we were at risk of that, uh, and that I could take any one part of that budget and explain to somebody what it's for in a way that could say, that could say, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that we stay that way, and it's good that we spend the time going through it and looking and making sure that, that we haven't gone crazy someplace.
And I, I encourage folks, I had some conversations the last couple of weeks, but I've steered people to go online, is it go?
Me to?
Check out, go through the line items and ask, it's all, it's, it's all out there, it's all very transparent, and I would answer any, if you have any questions on those line items, I'll do the best I can to answer them for you, you know, and, and if you, if you ask.
Kind of repeat myself.
Yeah.
And, and that is that, I think we've done, well, he's done, done our oversight, but he's done a terrific job in breaking this down and defining the reasons for all these expenses, okay? And I'm suggesting that if we walk in there at the town meeting, with start off with a pie chart that says eighty-five percent of this is non-discretionary and it's contractual, and here are those, here's a rough list of those, that conversation goes, by the way, as opposed to what la- last year, we went through every damn item, and it was like a discussion, you know? So, we could narrow it down and also demonstrate the, the, the. Demonstrate the 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 quality of the work that went into the budget. By defining it in the categories of. Required, absolutely contractual. We can't change. You know, the solid, the uh. Like transit station, we can't change the school, we can't do this, we can't do that. And just get that out of the way and then then focus further on and and narrow the discussion to some items that they might want to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying, Tom.
Change the ambulance, can't change the hydrants.
Down that way.
What you would need and what Andy's asking, this is where um, he he's looking at that gray area is we 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 need to define. What we need by contractually obligated. So i- if if like you're going down that rabbit hole with ordinances and and charter and whatnot, too. Cause there's things that are required for that. So if you're looking at. Contractually obligated, we can narrow that down to just a a handful of stuff. I mean, it's not a huge.
But it's a large amount of.
It's a large amount of money. I I agree, I agree. So I mean, that's something we can, like you say, solid waste. We have a assessors agent, we have the um, the hydrants.
Right.
The but there's, I mean, it's, there's a handful of things. So, yeah, yeah, I can look at.
Number, it's a matter of what percentage of the budget it represents that we can't control.
Well, I don't think. I mean, there's contracts and then there's choices. We choose to mow the cemetery. Is it a contract?
Well, it's a contract and you must, I mean, the state statute says it can't be beyond four inches in height, actually.
Okay.
Right, so so these are things.
Yeah. I didn't know that either.
But yeah, yeah.
But I'm saying, is it a con?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Referring as an example, we keep referring to the the transfers. A long time ago, sitting at your table. We put together a plan. A proposal to create our own. Transfer. Station, our own transfer system. They left us, the people at the town meeting left us battered and bleeding in the street. I will never do that again. And and it wasn't one of those thirty minute, thirty person town meetings.
Yeah.
There may only have been a hundred and some odd, but they made it totally clear. That they did not like that idea at all.
Well, and 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 I'm sure then you crunch the numbers, but the numbers, you know, right now with our, the the contract with them is still. Very affordable for what we we'd we'd have to do.
So we came out of that, it's subsequent years. With the trying the 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 permits. For the commercial vehicles.
Yeah.
All right, you know, oh, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you tried, you cut something, somebody's gonna come in and throw a stone at you.
Should we talk about?
Not telling that position, or do you want to wait?
I I think, I think we can go through. I mean, there's some items in here. Uh, you know, we've got things like the hydrants, there's certain things there that um, like we talked about that are. I mean, there's not a lot of discussion there.
I mean, the ambulances, too.
I ambulance, yeah. Ambulance, there's there's ones there that are just just fixed. I mean, we can have, what I what I would avoid tonight maybe is having, I we can have discussion on any of the items, I think. Before we make a motion, like if you want to discuss something with the PD. Um, I just don't think we should make a motion on it tonight without all of us being here. So I I don't have any problem discussing, yeah, whatever you guys want to discuss. I mean. Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we um? Why don't we cruise through um, and and just we'll we'll knock some things out of the park here that are. I mean, frankly, we could do the fire department tonight if wanted, because Josh can't uh. Josh can't move on it anyway, so, so um. But we should probably, let's guess. Yeah, let me get my bearings here for a second. So um. We should probably skip admin for right now.
Yep.
Just because there's a lot there. They have questions, I have any major concerns with it, but.
Are we skipping operating?
Well, uh. Yeah, we want to go to. I mean, does anybody feel?
Just lead us, just take us some place.
Yeah, yeah, let's go to solid waste, page twenty one. Um, I mean, that one there is 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 fixed, right? So. Um, we currently have the uh, town manager proposal of uh, one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, right? Um, we know that one's.
Didn't we already sign a contract? We already.
Or mine, um, in the comments, they they work on a calendar year budget, we work on a fiscal year budget, we're off by six months, so we are trying to guess. What the first six months of their fiscal year twenty six will be, will be, or twenty five, twenty six will be. Which is the backend of this budget. And so we're guessing six months of expenditures um, right now. And so. Yes, we signed a contract for their calendar year at one. One eighty-two, two fifteen.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's gonna cover known assessment, assessed payments or assessed amounts from July to. Or sorry, from January to June.
Yeah.
We're trying to guess for. Following January to June in next year's budget. So that's where the difference in the two lines there is, one's at eight percent, one's at ten percent. Of an increase, not knowing. They've had some, they've had some sizable increases themselves over the last few years that make. That's why I threw the two different numbers there, and it's a question of which one would you prefer to, we're obligated to pay it. Um, if we're gonna continue to use them, so.
Right.
That's you, again, here's an example. Do you want to consider that additional two percent discretionary, knowing that we have to pay it, if that's what it ends up being? If it's being twelve percent, it doesn't matter whether we did ten percent anyways, but um, that's an example there where it's like, we're trying to guess what half of our fiscal year would be.
That's rational, and it's gonna be higher.
Yeah, I know.
Throw a taxpayers' question at you?
Certainly, that one is right, the different contract, we have to pay it. Are we? Exerting all the pressures we can. To keep that contract down. In other words, that contract is based on how efficiently, I'm I'm only asking.
No, 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 it's a good question because.
Here's question.
Um, I will, I don't want to speak for you, Andy, but um, Andy's been active with this. And Newcastle as well, you guys have gone over and and. It's it's kind of interesting where we don't have a lot of say. We're not a member, so we're at the mercy, so I know.
We can ask questions, but we don't have a vote in the matter.
I've I've attended one or two of those, and they were nice to me. But I had no influence. I'm asking that question only because somebody from the floor could.
Yeah. No, that's fine. It's a fair question and it's a. It's it's a fair number this point, so I don't feel like the town's getting taken for anything, but.
My concern, from what I've seen, my, they've got a about a fifty thousand dollar fund balance. Um, they've in next, in this now twenty twenty-five budget for theirs, have a ten thousand dollar capital allowance that's being raised. That's all they have in the foreman up there rattled off a list of probably three hundred plus thousand dollars worth of investment and infrastructure. For the facility. And that's that's over, that's something he said should be done the next five years. And so I worry a little bit about.
Next year.
The stability or like what the increases are if they aren't. It's all we can do is ask the question, and we did, asked if there's a capital plan. Um, but I I'd just be mindful of, you know, what does that look like with? Four or five town sharing essentially in that cost, with only two having the vote.
Yeah.
Right now, as it stands, it's a comfortable number.
So so like right now.
Equally paying, do we feel like?
It's a little unclear exactly how the formula is.
If you're asking, would would I make a motion to move one hundred and ninety thousand, four forty-five?
Yeah. Yeah, I I think we're we're. Absolutely. So Dan made a motion.
Yeah.
To uh, to to recommend, yeah, for the one I add. And Tom seconded.
Didn't want to do that because Josh wasn't.
No, we're gonna, some of the stuff we're we're gonna, it's it's more or less fixed. So we have some items that we're gonna make recommendations for. We're gonna pick and choose a little bit as we bounce through. So um, so Dan moved the one ninety, four forty-five, Tom seconded, um, any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Okay, we've recommended one ninety, four forty-five. We're solid waste. Yeah, that's, I mean, so um. The other one I was thinking, um, let's see, uh, we've got municipal, um, but that has, um. We do have some questions on municipal as far as, what was it? There was a uh, the the restroom cleaning, whatnot, so why don't we? Move on to. I suppose we can do, yeah, we can do contingency. Um, that's usually not too much of a hot button.
We can do CLC.
Um, yeah, we can do this. So let's, yeah, let's do contingency, which is the next one on twenty-four.
Okay.
Um, because that's um. That's actually a decrease. No, sorry, wait, wait.
It's the same as last year's budget.
Yeah, 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 sorry, it's fifteen and and uh. Yeah, eighteen and eighteen, sorry.
Yeah, I'll move that one as well. Eighteen thousand.
Oh, you're taking the decrease, huh?
He's going with the manager's proposal.
You want to do the fifteen?
No, we want to do the manager's. He knows what he's doing.
We're fine, yeah.
But that may be three thousand that you.
It is, you're you're, you know. I think we'd be safer to keep it at the eighteen, then. Honestly, with contingency, that's not a lot of money.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so. All right, you can continue with your motion, unless I'm sorry.
I move eighteen thousand uh, for the, on the contingency line for the budget.
All right, thank you, Dan. All right, Andrew's gonna second that. Any more discussion on, all right, well, good, um, all those in favor? Okay, so contingency, we're recommending eighteen thousand. Um, I feel comfortable with legal. I don't think legal is a big one. Um, I don't think I, Josh has any issues. I mean, we know that, yeah, we've. Legal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So you're today, we're at ten thousand. I understand.
Two December, we were at ten thousand.
Yeah, and I understand what happened in twenty-four. I mean. Because we had.
Yeah.
We were, we're having some issues.
Yeah.
But if you go back to twenty-two and twenty-three, if that's more like what it is, normal times.
What I would caution you on is we have um, a whole bunch of ordinance stuff we're redoing and looking at. And with comp plan stuff coming through, you're gonna find that we're probably gonna be leaning on legal a lot more. Um, to look at the legality, constitutionality of stuff and do that.
Uh, when this discussion came up before, you said it could go one, five thousand, one way or the other.
Yeah, so that's why.
And that's totally up to the board. I just, just know that if we find ourselves needing to utilize our legal line for something. We don't have a choice over versus we can choose to implement this ordinance change now or wait another year if our budget's going over. That's five grand. Again, so there's the trade offs of, there's a, there's a major list of initiatives behind the comp plan. We want to try and stand up.
The gamble is whether or not we have another lawsuit to deal with.
Well, not not to say, but any, anything that comes through that we need, I mean.
Ordinances, know what I'm saying, is the offset is if we don't have any that legal. Personnel or other kinds of issues.
Yeah, hopefully there's no, no.
Be assigned to the the ordinances.
Yeah. Yeah, there's enough, there's enough going on.
And and the board can always vote to take some money out of the contingency for it as well, right?
Wow. You don't need to vote, you don't need to vote for the contingency, it's just, it's no. The voters approve that there is a contingency and we would just, if we're over on a line, we can choose to.
Okay, right.
Journal it over towards the contingency if we need to. But yeah, I mean, an eighteen thousand dollar contingency on a four million dollar budget is.
Not much.
Nope.
How about twenty-two fifty?
Well, I think we originally talked about dropping it down to twenty.
Yeah, we did.
Well, there's, I mean, any, any suggestion, I would caution.
I understand, but when are we gonna like, I mean, we do have to cut.
Well, we, okay.
Just keeping it in mind.
So cut it.
No, I'm just saying.
Well, I I I know, but the question is where.
We know that this is not definitive. We don't know. This is a guess, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But you've got to work, look at, I I. Look at what's coming down the pike here for um, uh, all, you know, the comp plan has has dictated a whole bunch of stuff that that. Needs to be implemented. Um, we've got ordinances, we've talked about pilot programs. I mean, there's a lot of stuff right now that's that's being, and we have. Historically, um. We've done a lot of ask legal afterwards, that's probably costs more in the long run than than have, I mean, I'm not, it just. It's the way it's done, like, and we don't want to spend any money illegal, so we go in and we have something done, and then we have legal look at it and fix it afterwards, which costs more.
Devil's advocate again, we had two big issues that. Burned up a lot. A personnel issue and a contract.
Oh, we've had, and I can go back.
The other years.
Well, and those few that were shared, yeah.
But we can't anticipate that we're not gonna have those again this year.
No, it's it's a, it's a. So I'm I'm gonna make a motion to recommend the twenty-five thousand for for legal. I'm just gonna make the motion, if anyone wants to second it, we don't have to move it, whatever you guys want to do. All right, Andrew seconds. Any more discussion? Hey, all those in favor? I'm gonna move it, okay, we don't have it.
You didn't, they didn't.
You need, you need three to pass.
That's, I said it didn't pass. I said all those in favor, I raised my hand, said we don't have it, so we'll move on. Yeah, yeah, no, I, that's what I said. They said we don't, we don't have.
I can see.
Putting the hands up, so that's fine, we'll we'll revisit it, so unless.
Alternative motion, I approve uh, or make a motion to approve twenty-two five.
Bartering back and forth, so, yeah.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Is it a second? Okay, any other discussion?
I think it's a good phase.
Oh, this is gonna be an interesting one. All those in favor? All right, Josh, come on. I have a feeling, my guts telling me we're gonna need the twenty-five, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with it. We'll we'll table it for next week.
Actually, we had a friendly debate.
Yeah, I I feel it, yeah. Anyway, well, we've got it, let's move on, let's move on. Do you have all that down, that that circus? All right, good. Yeah, like, like, yeah, um, insurances. We can't do.
I didn't see anything to to even talk about.
Right, I I don't, I don't believe there's anything on assurances on page twenty-six that we can, we can do.
So I would actually move all of them, forty-four, forty-three, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, or do you want individual ones? You can't.
No, you can just move the.
I moved the total insurance.
Move the total.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it again, man. Yeah, 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 okay, great, I was looking at, it's revenue, but um, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go for that.
The fourteen thousand nine seventy for.
It's kind of.
The the four insurances above.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
I'll move that.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, Tom seconded, all those in, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor? Hey, we got one.
We need insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
All right, yeah. All right, um, good, insurance, um, general assistance, um.
Wait, wait.
Those numbers, the the department request number. And the town manager's number. Are the same. They've they've increased the same number of dollars. How come the percentage of increase is different?
Oh, that's a good question.
I got, oh, down to the bottom. Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a typo. Yeah. Nine seventy-nine, so it's the same number.
It's all the same number going all the way down, it's just a typo.
Well, just formula thing, I must be. Putting it over a different.
Yeah.
Save five minutes on the floor.
Okay, great.
Yeah, here we go, um.
Thank you, Dick.
Uh, general assistance, I think we can do general assistance, twenty-seven.
Sure, I'll move that as well.
That's uh.
Five thousand.
Okay, Dan's gonna move the five thousand. I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
We're gonna be able to blame most of this budget on Dan.
Yeah, but again, you know. Discussed earlier, I mean, these are the ones, a certain one of these were, like, what do you do with general assistance? Now, let's skip.
We don't have to do the re- the revenues we do separately.
Because the, no, right, we don't do the revenue because we we can't.
You do make a recommendation for revenue, um. You can take it up separately, it's usually its own separate article.
Yeah, okay, right.
This was different this year for me to try and put it with different departments, um.
Yeah.
You know, still, you know, if if the warrant article. Stays the same, it's still kind of a lump sum. We kind of show different departments kind of generating.
Yeah.
Revenue, but.
Yeah, because there is some interesting revenue discussions to have in this budget.
There's advantages and disadvantages, perhaps, the way it's. Has been, um, it's just a general lump offset of revenue for. Overall expenditures, um, versus sometimes you'll see a warrant article.[1700.52] Overall expenditures, um, versus sometimes you'll see a warrant article, um, you know, to raise a million dollars for general admin. Uh, you know, eight hundred thousand from taxation and two hundred thousand from revenue. The only. Maybe not so great thing about that is if you've only raised a hundred and fifty thousand in revenue.
Yeah.
You gotta cut fifty grand all of a sudden before the year's over out of your operating side. You not spend fifty grand. Um, wait, is now, it does afford us some flexibility by not being so specific. So if the interest is earning more than we anticipated. And, and we're bringing in less revenue on the building permits, we're still able to raise and, and have that same contributing revenue. Um, so I think that the way we have it is nice in that regard, uh, but some do go a lot more detailed and it does become, uh. Chase the numbers towards the end of the year thing.
Okay.
And you end up with, I think, more uncertainty and having to make more dramatic changes and shifts at the end of the year. Overall, ration for the same thing is affording us some flexibility and kinda where the offsets are.
Okay, so is the plan to go through revenue separately?
I, I think so, yeah. We'll just continue through where we're at, yeah. Yeah, no, good question, Dan. Yeah, um, let's, uh, let's go with page thirty eight, um, which is ACO. That's a contracted one. Everybody see that one?
Yeah.
Skip BD.
It's, they're the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'll, uh, I'll, uh, make a motion to recommend, uh, the seventy eight fifty, um, for animal control.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, get that one, uh, one second, Dan, do you second that one? All right, Dan seconds. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Okay, get that one going. All right. Do we feel, uh, fire department, um, I know this is one where Josh is gonna sit out anyway. But you may have some questions that he can answer, so we don't have to do it tonight.
I think we ought to wait for him.
That's fine, yeah, yeah. He can't, he won't weigh in on the voting on it anyway, but if you have any questions, yeah. Okay, uh, page fifty three then, hydrants, that's a fun one.
Another non-negotiable.
Yeah, and this is only the, and this is only the first increase, so.
This is, this is, this is both of them.
This is both of them.
Cuz it, it's happening in twenty five and twenty six, so we're, we're accounting for.
We crossed over.
I think, I think the way we projected it, I don't know if Cheryl's he, hearing me and has the number or not, but I think this fiscal year, we were. We, we had voted, I think, or estimated a minor increase this fiscal year. It went beyond that, and I think we're talking. Eighteen thousand dollars more than we expected. Is that, am I off on that one? I know we've looked at it, and so that's one there that we're gotta find or go back to the taxpayers to.
Yeah.
Raise before the year's over.
Well, it was a huge increase.
It's insane, yeah.
It's using all of, all of the contingency and then some. That's already been pegged for some things.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, and because it's in, the way it's voted on, it's in public safety, public safety, fire, ACO, EMA, very small, very. No, I mean, um, there's just, like, there's not a lot of personnel costs, like, say, health insurance, we're estimating someone to have family coverage and they don't. Well, that's a twenty thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
We'd be able to cover it.
Yeah.
It's in the.
Have that buffer.
I do have to ask MMA if we can use it against the contingency, and then all of a sudden contingencies within general government, and then there is a little bit more. To work with, um, potentially.
Okay.
Um, you know, CEO wasn't filled for quite a bit of time. Michael and I just did it without extra, so that, that, that was unspent, um. You know, I think there was something else in there that was pretty substantial that we'd be able to utilize.
So you do some fancy accounting and.
Oh, I mean, it's nothing, nothing shady or anything, but it's just working within what the voters approve.
Just move, move and stuff around, make sure you legally.
Otherwise, we go back to the voters and have to do a town meeting and raise more money from fund balance and.
Right.
Um, but that was kind of out of our.
Okay.
And I did ask if they could wait. Sorry, Cheryl wanted.
Uh, for the solid waste, we are gonna be short at that one, forty five hundred dollars.
Hydrants.
Hydrants.
Hydrants, yep, sorry. Solid waste, we're gonna be short more.
Yep. Solid waste was a different issue. We, we never got the contract back until I went to the meeting in January. Um, we had it in the budget doc, but didn't modify the new contract amount on our payment sheet that went under every month. And so we underpaid our solid waste last fiscal year, and they let us know that. So some of that was twenty four, that would have to be put into twenty five.
Okay.
So that was a twenty eight thousand dollar, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, so again, some of it was for this fiscal year, which we can do, but we're gonna have to pay for some of last fiscal year in this fiscal year. So they didn't pick up on it. We didn't get the contract back or change our price on our sheet and.
Okay.
We're all good for next year, though.
Yeah.
Hasn't been documented.
All right, well, I, I tell you what, I'll reluctantly. Make a motion to approve the, uh, sixty nine thousand eight hundred ninety seven dollars for hydrants.
No, that's just the increase, dear.
I, I think you're at, oh my gosh, I think you're at two hundred and twenty seven thousand.
I didn't want it to be, no.
It's an approved the increase.
That's all I'm approving. That, that's all I made the motion for.
All right.
Scratch my motion. Oh, well, I, I will make a motion to recommend, uh, to, uh, to approve, but I recommend the two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars for hydrants. Yeah, that's what I meant. I just didn't wanna say it. Who wants to second that one? All right, Andrew's gonna second. Any more discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Ask if we could push it off, so we didn't do it all in one fiscal year, and they just, they weren't allowing us to do that, cuz. They got rules, just like we have taxation, people have to pay tax bill, and the voter said it's here and here, and we can pay the late fee. Can't change that. Uh, so they, their hand, their board was tied equally in that regard.
All right, um, let's, let's vote here. Yeah, I was in favor. Okay, yeah, reluctantly, yeah. All right, um. Yeah, yeah, um, then the warrant. We have streetlights fifty four and, and traffic lights. These are relatively minor ones. Um, I don't think there's a lot of, I don't know, anybody have any concerns if, I, I don't think.
No, it looks like it's been shaved anyway.
Josh has got, yeah, I, I think it's comfortable without, um, Josh being here. I don't think he'll have any issues.
Approve streetlights at six thousand.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Second.
Um, that was close. I'll, uh, all right, she's giving it up. I'll give it to Dan. Yeah, any discussion?
See that it went higher in twenty four, so we should be hopefully safe.
Hey.
At six.
Yep.
That's just straight electric cost and any maintenance we have to do, so.
Yeah.
It's possible that it won't be, but.
Yeah, hopefully, so. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, on the next page, look at traffic lights. Oh, who wants the small one? Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll move, uh, the twenty seven hundred dollars for recommendation for traffic lights.
Second.
Andrea's gonna second. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor? All right, that one there, so. Oh, boy, CLC, Tom. One you've been waiting for, so.
Well, we can't get off any cheaper than this deal we have.
Yeah, yeah.
We should be happy with it.
Well, it's a given, right, Tom?
What's that?
It's contracted.
It's a contract.
Yeah, yeah, but it's also a good contract.
But, yeah, like, his point right now, it's, you know, it's like.
Yeah, try to have your own.
All the waste, it's.
Try to have your own ambulance service for a hundred and the X thousand.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the CLC ambulance.
Awesome, thank you, Tom. Um, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, ambulance it is, so, all right, so we'll, we'll skip public works. That's the big one.
Yeah, Josh needs to be here for that.
Yeah, 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 there's, like I said, there's a few here that we can do, I think comfortably. I, I told Josh that. I said, I wouldn't, do whatever we wanna do, but I don't feel comfortable with, if any of us were, it's too much at stake here, so. Should all be here, um.
We can do cemetery.
I think cemetery's safe, um.
The biggest unknown there is the contract price and what that comes back at in November.
For.
Yeah.
For mowing.
For mowing, right, that's coming for mowing, so. Why don't we, um. Yeah, that's right, I forgot about that one.
When did you say that comes back?
Yeah.
November, they, they're good for the rest of this, this year.
So it's just.
So. Well, it's a very small increase that should cover.
I think we estimated five percent, which.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's only that, I guess I'd probably be a little surprised, uh.
Yeah.
A lot of labor that goes into that.
Well, let's, let's table that for next week then, cuz, um, Josh may have a little bit of a more of a, you know, he may have, you know, on the, on the. Mowing contract, no reason, cuz he, that's what he does, so.
That's our mowing.
So, um, day and H.
So, the one thing, just a question, the thirty one thousand versus sixty three thousand under. Well, it's twenty, that's year to date, that's what we're doing.
Okay, but we can hold off on that one next week and have Josh weigh in on that, uh. Ooh.
Biscay.
Biscay Beach.
I'll move Biscay Beach.
All right.
Yeah.
You gonna move that? Get that number out there, Dan.
Yeah.
We need that porta potty out there.
Yep, oh, actually, Dan might get your, Tom second?
Yep.
All right, um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, Biscay Beach is good. Let's just keep that porta potty. Don't wanna do too much to it, so, all right, um. We do have, uh, uh, community services. This one typically is. Um, i- is, is typically pretty, uh, pretty mild, um.
Yeah.
Fourth of July appropriation, it's always been twenty five hundred dollars for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Um, and it, yeah, and then thousands.
Riverside Park, didn't we talk about not doing it?
So, uh, well, this is, this is, yeah, this is something right here we can look at and say, all right, um. Plant or box maintenance, uh, honestly, a thousand bucks is probably not gonna get you much to plant and decorate Riverside Park.
We're gonna need to look for money to fix that from public.
So they talked, it's also covers, um, Main Street, the hanging baskets and stuff like that, so.
It does?
It's what it's for. It, it's, it's in there in the lineup, but it's also a thousand dollars, so, you know, I mean, I guess we do the math on. Potted flowers and, and stuff and.
So I'm just looking at, we had the potted plants and it's twenty four actual is twenty nine dollars.
Yeah, and in twenty two, it was thirty six.
Yeah, cuz we haven't, we haven't done them.
I haven't missed them.
For a while. I think the last time, if I remember right, I think the last, you helped me with this, Andy, the, um. The potted, the, the hanging flowers last time on Main Street, was that done through, um, I think it was done through the chamber.
Cheryl. I don't know. Not sure.
She didn't remember, yeah.
I think it was through the chamber and like Twin Villages Alliance, the business group got together and, and prettied up Main Street.
Yeah, cuz they, cuz I, yeah, JR came down. I remember a bunch of us went out and helped and hung them up, so it was done, so we didn't even, that's why we only spent twenty nine dollars. I know what that was spent on.
Some of the feedback I've gotten from downtown is that, you know, years, years ago, so the seventies of town endeavored to become a historic Main Street. And that some business owners, um, have expressed that, well, shouldn't it look like a nice historic Main Street? So we have, I think that's partly why we have a sweeper.
Yeah.
And so we come through and sweep more frequently, um, and that flowers was another thing, so whether we can find community partners to do it, and if not, then it's a matter of, okay, well, we just don't do it this year.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think this is something that we, we can find community partners on.
I'll make a motion to approve five hundred dollars for this Riverside Park.
So do you wanna move?
Three thousand for the, uh, community services.
Okay, so you wanna modify, um, uh, ninety seven seventy seven to five hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're proposing.
Three thousand.
Three thousand for, uh, community services, okay. So Tom's got a motion out there to recommend three thousand dollars for community services. Do I have a second?
Really?
I don't want to do any, I was gonna go down further.
I wanna go zero. I wanna go, I wanna go.
Do another motion, help.
Well, if we don't have a second, so Tom's motion dies. If.
I'm making a motion, that, okay, that. Um, for holiday funding, we do twenty five hundred and for Riverside Park, zero.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna.
Don't see why we need to have fireworks at all.
That's his motion.
Yeah, all right, so Dan, right now, Dan has a motion.
Hang on, everybody.
Zero on Riverside Park.
Dan has a motion for zero.
Second.
Uh, hang on. Just wanna clarify everything. So Dan's made a motion for, uh, to reduce ninety seven seventy seven to zero dollars, um, bring in the. Community services to twenty five hundred. Okay, do we have a second on that? Tom's gonna make a second, okay, um, no, any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, all right, I'm good with that. So three, Andrea, all those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Yeah, yeah, put your hand up. Say, I don't wanna do it.
I don't wanna do it.
All right, you got it. So, three to one, so we, there, we've got a, we've got a, uh, a thousand dollar reduction. Hey, it's, it helps. So, I mean, the reality is that one there is, right, that's a moot one, because we can get people, if we wanna put flowers down there, holy, holy, we can get people on board.
Riverside Park.
Yeah. Yes, she's waiting for, um. Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, um, all right, so let's, um. So community services, let's skip community betterment right now. I know, I think Josh can weigh in on some stuff there if he wants to.
And also, don't we have an issue with community betterment in the sense of if. They ask for it and we put the warrant out and the people pass it.
Yes, but it's a petition process, so it's, it's moot.
To us whether to pass it or not, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
The people pass it.
But we may have some discussion on it, that's all, I, I.
Yeah, we.
Yes, you're absolutely right. It's a petition process, so the numbers are recommended, yeah.
In that the petition process is, is, is that driven by the state? Or is it?
Ordinance.
It's our ordinance.
Yeah, no, you have a policy that you updated last year. The state, just, you could have a policy says we don't accept them at all. And because there is a, an allowance of the state statute for people to bring a petition forward.
That's, yeah.
If they bring forward a petition and for any interest or dollar value to be raised, that must go on a town meeting warrant at some point in the future.
Yeah.
So even if you eliminate it entirely and say we're not accepting them, period, some towns do that, um, some set a dollar value that they're willing to be able to afford. Um, regardless of what comes in. So it's all over the place as to what towns do with it, but at the end of the day, if, if you were eliminated and, and a nonprofit came forward with. All of these requests still, with the required number of signatures to, to drive a petition, drive a warrant article, it would have to go forward.
Yeah, and, I mean, all these, you can look at any one of them and defend them, but, but it feels like it's a, it's a little out of our control is. Because, you know, you've got three or four new ones this year and.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a hard one, because it's, it's a lot of money, you know, so. Um, it is almost five thirty, folks. I would say, um, we could wrap up with, I mean. Debt services is a safe one, nothing we can do about debt services.
Right.
So, and you can reduce it if you want to, but they're still gonna send us the. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, on page sixty nine here, I'll, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend, uh. Uh, two hundred one thousand nine seventy five for debt services.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, second, I was gonna, any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Okay, I signed that bond, so I feel, uh, I feel obligated to, to move it, so. My name's on something very, Cheryl and I are on that one, I think. That doesn't go against our credit, does it, Cheryl?
No, it actually helps our credit with the way the town pays our bills.
All right, um, well, let's take a couple minutes, um, we've got, yeah, good, good. We got some stuff on there, so good discussion, so let's take a couple minutes here and get situated. We can get into the. Get into our board meeting. We've got some folks that are ready to go here. We're not too far off, but let's, uh. All right, Andrea, you wanna start there with the financials and we'll take a quick look?
Again, I got all the paper copies right there to lose that.
We would need the penalty box right there, so, yeah. Yeah, we won't, we'll make you guys wait a couple more hours, you know, we get to the end of this, so, yeah. You don't wanna get back to work.
We have, depending when you vote.
Not at all, right?
Just looking at it now.
Have up to a lot of money, but when I was doing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Providing a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars.
Eighty two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Michael Wells, new guy.
Oh, no, like I said.
Just can roll right there for you, yeah, so.
Yeah. Well, like the libraries, libraries are great, libraries are great, Kelly. They get all their funding from the second name bookstore.
Vehicle under the police? What did you see it in? I mean, we just bought a, uh, we did, we bought a new Ford pickup, but I don't know what the. No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that much, no. I mean, outfitted everything. I can't remember what the number is, but.
It's online.
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it, yeah.
So that's all, all right.
Yeah, they're done like that much, but they're not cheap, you know? No, no, I don't think that, that sound, doesn't sound right, yeah. Yeah, or anytime, yeah.
Hundred and thirty hours because, um, folks were out that week and so he picked up overtime.
Wow.
So you had a hundred and thirty hours in two weeks.
Okay. Good question, good answer.
Yeah. It stands out, huh?
It certainly does.
You got positions and shifts that need to be filled and he was able to do it. Still down.
Service levels do we need?
We're still down one essentially. Cover sheet in there?
Uh, no. I didn't see one.
Andy, do we have a cover sheet for?
Account payable?
Account payable cover sheet.
I've got, we've got invoices, but. I don't see the.
I don't know.
Oh, is it on the back? No, it's a warrant preview, that doesn't look right. Oh, yeah, it is a summary. What's that? Sometimes.
Wait till we really get into it.
Sometimes.
They're not always this fun.
No, no, they're not too bad. Yeah. That's why we don't, we're not allowed any sharp objects or staplers or anything, but yeah. Yeah, no pencils. You're gonna get a few people there who say that. Yeah, define, define a lot of people, yeah, so, yeah. If you, if you go downtown, see how many people show up for those covers? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and, and that's, you know, and there, and there's a, I mean, that's, that's a, um, a, a, uh, uh, realistic
Maybe just.
Issue, you know, there are folks PTSD and whatnot, they don't go to the fireworks, they remove those. They're not, you're not gonna get a veteran with PTSD that's gonna go, I want to be downtown on Fourth of July, stop the farts, they don't. They avoid that stuff. So it's, it's an honest concern, but it's, it's pretty moot, yeah, and the same thing with. You can't control the thunder. I have animals, the dogs don't like lightning storms and thunder, but I can shut it off, so it's like. It's an hour, you know, it's, oh, thank you, Andy, sorry, it's, um, it's, it's an hour on a night clock on a one night. Yeah, exactly. Oh, really? Yeah, so.
Down in New Harbor?
Yeah.
If someone else bought it, I think it is gonna do the same thing or sorts of.
Alright, so we're getting three forty-six seventy-one, alright. And that's.
Get a hundred dollar fee or five hundred dollar fee for new businesses. Can we do that on the warrant?
We have to build an ordinance.
Okay. Registering business license.
Ordinance in place to be able to.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta do that. And should be like an annual renewal fee of.
Hundred bucks. How many businesses we have in town?
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, yeah, if it was every year a hundred dollars, including Airbnb's. I bet your number would be closer to five hundred.
Could be.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, uh, we're gonna get us moving here, we've got folks waiting there, guys, so Jeff, you can take a quick look at that warrant and we can.
Sure.
There you go. Can get, uh. Who's only wrong, not a big number.
There you go.
What's three hundred fifty thousand dollars?
It's just zeros.
Yeah. Moving the Congress, well, I, I mean, the reality is we went through. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, alright. Alright, you guys go there, okay, let's get started. So we are already in session, so don't need to call us to order. Let's see if people get out of order out here, I got a big guy, he's hiding in the back there. Everybody's got their PowerPoint presentations right here, right? Alright, so, uh, yes, we're moved from our budget workshop and, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna call the, uh, select board meeting to order for, um, Wednesday, March fifth, already in session, so we'll just keep plugging along, so, um, uh, we'll get our stuff out of the way, and we've got some folks, um, uh, waiting for some stuff for liquor licenses, and we'll probably ask the board if we can move those up. And we can do those, do those now if you guys, you guys don't mind, so, um, like, keep, keeping people waiting that are trying to work here, so. Uh, so official action items, we're gonna bounce right to, uh, one and two on there, we have a, um, liquor license renewal for reunion station. Don't see any issues there, I'll.
Second.
Tom, you want that one? Okay, oh, I'll make a motion, don't give a second, okay, I got you. Yeah, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, reunion station liquor license renewal is approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the penalty box.
Alright, thank you, Tom, I'll second you on that one. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, two, three, done, you guys are good, um, Andy, when should they, uh?
They don't, um, the new process, my understanding is Becky just uploads the signed document and sends it back to the state and you don't need to come back to us. That's my understanding.
Wow, the government has streamlined services. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Awesome, alright, um, so let's go back, uh, uh, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes, um, for the nineteenth?
I only, uh, uh, have a comment about having my name be spelled correctly.
Okay, yep.
Seems to be a common.
Where spelling is, yeah, it is what it is, right? Where, where were you there, Andrea, point it, point it out in the minutes, like whereabouts were you?
Would be good.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page here.
It's okay.
So, okay, so we just need to correct, um.
It shows that I read it.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but you only read it for your name, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll ask Andrea, cause she's made a change, so I'll, I'll ask her to, to make the motion.
Make a motion to have my name spelled correctly.
Yeah, so you move it as amended, yeah. Alright, uh, second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Alright, that's done, um, payroll warrant number forty-two. Pretty good there, got a chance to look it over?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move forty-two.
Second.
I'm gonna second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Alright, let it along, um, count's payable number forty-three. Pretty good there?
Make a motion to approve forty-three.
Please thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Dan's gonna take that one, I saw you, I saw you making a move there, so, yeah, I saw the twitch in the elbow. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, good enough, um, any other, uh, comments, Andy, anything come in last minute? I don't see anybody on the big screen.
Nothing that I can recall.
Yep, okay, so, let's see, we wanna, there with me just a minute here.
This story.
We can go through, do you have anything under management report that you want to go through right now, or?
Um, sure, we're working through on the parking lot project, I haven't actually read the article that came out last week, but, um, I understand there was a cover about, not cover, but a story about that, um, working with engineers and cricker to kind of finalize, like final striping plan and some other small detail things, then come back in and, and get to work. We are still actually waiting for our extension to go to the end of May.
Okay.
Um, so we might need to get a little creative with that, um, uh, we have submitted for our, um, fourth pay rec, uh, in reimbursement from, from the feds, and for nine hundred, just over nine hundred thousand. So we're hoping that that goes through in an efficient time, and it comes back to us.
Yes.
And we do have the one that was on a warrant a couple of weeks ago, we might submit that one and just get it in, that was for four hundred thousand, and we'd get seventy-five percent of that back, so we might just put that one in where it's clean, just its own piece and send it in. There are a couple of things with the parking, um, that we're working with, reaching out to a couple of business owners, property owners, just to get their opinion on. Largely won't change, um, but the angle of the parking spots, um, might just be more uniform, the width might be more uniform, right now it's sometimes a little bit different, the lines are a little um, move a little bit as it goes through there, so we're just trying to maximize what we can, but still pretty much keep it the same. It does bring into question um, our traffic and parking ordinance, um, it's pretty specific where some spots can and can't be, where certain ones need to be in certain places. We're trying to be a little bit better about where we place the handicap spots. Uh, moving one by the boat launch over to be on the end, not in the middle.
Yeah.
Um, putting one, you know, where that smaller, shorter row of double parking is behind the backside of like Route seventy-seven, like right now, there's a handicap spot over by Colby and Gale and and we're thinking about putting it over on the other end of that where it's closer to the, some of those businesses over there and things like that, um, I don't know how involved the board wants to be in final determination, it's just a stamp, so we don't have to lock it in right now anyways, we can bring it back once we have that tentative plan, if you bring it back to the board. That's the big one, the I mean, a lot of time in the last two weeks has been really looking at some of these RFPs to try and make sure we get the information to use, you can make an informed decision, um. Applied for Margaret Chase Smith, um, policy fellow. Um, for the summer, it's a twelve week program, pays a little bit higher than minimum wage, um, but the idea, and we can always say no if, if accepted as a site. Um, but the idea would that be, having not heard any clear, no, we don't want to consider business licensing or registration. Uh, would have that, have someone come in and help us do the research and build out that ordinance, because staff capacity internally currently is not set up for us to get that in place, to raise the funds the next fiscal year.
This is in addition to the Island Institute?
It would be in addition to. So I did, I did ask for, um, and apply at the same time for MMA or MMA or MT-CMA, either one of the two, it's, um, has a scholarship program that would fund like almost half of that cost. So if that was the case, it'd be about a four thousand dollar expense, um, to have that, someone help us with that.
Great.
For twelve weeks, that was a pretty reasonable.
Yes.
Yeah, piece to put in, uh, we are still waiting to hear back if we're gonna host an Island Fellow. And then the, I feel like there was another one we put in. I did apply for a main community foundation grant. Um, to help with the Island Fellow cost and the software costs for the implementation program for the comp plan. Um, so we'll wait and see how those come out.
Yeah.
Um, still eager to find, uh, grant funding opportunity for the Church Street, um, Hodgson Street Project, um. There's a Northern Borders application due soon, but talking with the staff at Lincoln County and, and with someone from Northern Borders, it didn't sound like we would make out well with what we have right now to submit for the spring. But they encouraged us to follow up with them and talk more strategically about how we could make our application a strong economic development case, um, we're talking about building sidewalk and trail, so we, it's, it might be a little bit of a stretch. Um, but we need a little more time to try and make a stronger connection to the economic development piece to be worthy. Um, otherwise, I think it's, we might have to try to do the bike ped program funding, which means we'd have to probably do it in two phases, um, cause they'll only give up to, I think, half a million dollars. Um, so we could, and they would only fund the sidewalk portion of the project.
Gotcha.
Uh, yeah, they wouldn't even be able to do the Hodgson Street bec- unless we make it one way. And make the bike, bike pedestrian lane a true width that they have adopted, they haven't adopted, the state hasn't adopted the kind of the shared street concept we have in that lower part.
Yeah.
It's not a true bike lane width, if you. So there's a couple of things there that we might need to do, just because it's taking as long as it has to try and get it, I know we want to try and get it done.
Yeah.
Sooner rather than later, the road is.
Oh my god, it's falling.
Um, so it might just mean we might have to pay a little bit more for the road portion of it and but we'll keep, I mean, I think we've gone after four big federal asks at this point.
Keep throwing them out there and something's gonna stick, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of other smaller things I meant to write up and I just didn't get to it.
That's fine, yeah, no. So, okay. Awesome, thank you, um, moving along, um, it's like we have a, uh, recommendation for a, uh, uh, appointee to the, uh, Historic Commission. Have they been meeting regularly?
Uh, quarterly.
Quarter, that's what I mean, quarterly, yeah, yeah, so any, um, any business, they're just, just checking on, I mean, there's, it seems like there's a lot of.
The last meeting they had, uh, Roger Kiesling, uh, bought the, the building like where Chapman and Chapman Insurance is in, um, and so he wanted to put, I think it's Restore Skylight that used to be in there essentially.
Yeah, gotcha.
Um, and I think had considered putting a window on the bank entrance side, you can see where there's like the old granite sash where a window had been, I don't, I don't think he was gonna go through with that, but he was gonna put skylights back in, so that had to go back, that had to go to the commission.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, yeah.
What's he putting in there?
I think, I think upstairs is already, I think. Something isn't just do the same thing, just update them.
Yeah.
That sounds a bit.
Yeah, and you get insurance downstairs and stuff, so, yeah, okay. Um, so it looks like, yeah, we have a recommendation for, um, uh, Timothy Chaney, um, so, uh, if we remember that, yeah, we, we, we did approve to allow non-residents, um, to be on this commission because there's because of the building ownership's downtown, so that was something that they did, so, um, and everybody else is current, right, we've got twenty yeah, Bruce, Emily Davy, Roger, and yeah, those are all current, so good. Um, so I'll, yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Timothy Chaney to the, uh, Historic Preservation Remove, the Review Commission.
A second.
Andrew's gonna second? Alright, any discussion on that? Okay, those in favor? Alright, there. Good, yeah. So we'll put Tim to work, so. Um, alright, let's move on, we have the banking RFP selection, um. You guys had some questions and stuff from the last meeting and whatnot, I don't know, I gotta trust my, trust the bankers over here, so, yeah, a little bit out of my wheelhouse.
You made, you made a little bit of a different you made a different selection, right, or recommendation?
I did make a recommendation, yep.
But it's different than what we discussed, why don't you give us your rationale and then we can talk about.
Sure, so I mean, just looking at, you know, the six, it was, I think, seemed pretty straightforward that there was one that was just the least competitive, um, unfortunately that was our incumbent bank.
Yeah.
Um, it sounded like the board, and I know the staff certainly are more interested in trying to work with a bank in town. Um, in northeast offer a very competitive rate.
Right.
Um, but, you know, their closest branch is forty, thirty plus miles away or so. Bang, bang, where Brunswick, um, is technically a little bit closer, unless you're counting it from where Cheryl lives and then it's. So, you know, and when you look at what it would, so, our option would be to have a checking account locally. And we just manage the transfers needed and, um, not a, not a huge thing, but it's just be nicer to have it all. And we do have some competitive, um, rates, uh, offered by, um, three banks in town. Um, First National, uh, Bath Savings and Camden National, all offering three different indexes to measure, one's at seventy-five percent of, or eighty-five percent of the effective fed fund rate, the other one's a half a percent less the federal funds target upper limit, and the other one is the federated rate without a reduction. Um, so the three, um, I don't think the ones in there aren't in color, but the, the top bar, they are showing over the last three years how those rates have compared to each other, the top bar, um, is northeast. The the next two bars are pretty similar, um, and that's Camden, um, and Bath Savings. And then, um, First National Bank below those two. And then so the, right now, the difference between, um, the Camden National Bank as of February sixth, when they reported, it was pretty minimal, um, it looked, you know, Camden didn't offer CD rates on their proposal, um, Bath Savings did seem to present some pretty favorable, CD rates are very competitive with the other banks, and and then it's just a matter of whether you want to do shorter or longer term, um, with those, and those will change going forward, so. Um, you know, with that, just based on, you know, bank being in town and based on how the um, indexes have been performing, um, it would make sense to think about going with Bath Savings where it's not a reduction on the, in the index for our checking account.
And all other services or i- issues.
Only thing worth noting, and Cheryl did ask the question, um, I know the first is no fees on anything. Um, there were two.
Bath Savings has fees on things.
Two, well, there were two things that weren't free, and I don't know through the how likely we would be to, to need to utilize it, the ACH block, electronic debit block were not checked as free services. Um, they do have the positive pay, which is free, uh, which is not something we're currently using, I think we. Should be.
Yeah, really.
Um, so ACH block and electronic debit block, it didn't sound like when Cheryl and I looked at it, that we'd be likely to be using those services anyways, but those are, um, not checked as free.
Yeah, and, and, and between those two, I, my sense is that something like that is much more involved in the community than the gut feel.
Yes.
What I say. That was gonna be the difference maker.
I do think you can look at your, the reserve accounts and what we want to put into CDs is, again, the rates that were quoted as of February sixth may be different today on, on CDs, and so, you know, there's still a substantial amount of money there that you might look to shop around those rates every, was it three months or six months, or whatever the frequency might be to try and maximize the return on those on the shorter investments.
This, this is, I, I'm, it's above my pay grade, I'll say, so you guys have a better understanding, we do have I think we have some reps from the first here, if anybody has any questions, um, to follow up or anything like that, yeah. Um, but I'm gonna, this, this one's, I'm, I'm kinda gonna.
Well, also in considering that Camden and Bath didn't even bother to show up, and this is a reasonable account.
His recommendation is bad.
Just saying.
Right, yeah, and that, it's, it's just solely based on the fact that it's not a reduction of the, of, of the index. Um, and I didn't look beyond the three years, so trying to compare how the effective fed fund rate compares to the federated rate, um, I didn't look beyond the three year mark.
That's a pretty good window, three years, if you're tracking rates.
Right. But they offered it without a reduction, I mean, the only caveat with that is they did, it's tiered, and they told us if it was, the balance was over a million dollars, we'd get highest rate that they could provide, so, um, you know, I look back and you've seen, um, I think in the memo I did try and share where I thought our balance should be, um, on more average base, um.
Yeah.
So we should be above and, and be able to access that top tier rate.
Well, I'll make a motion to, to go with Bath Savings, um, and. I'll make a motion to go with Bath Savings.
Well, I mean, the, Andy's done the work that we asked for, and, um, he has to work with the banks, and since I don't see any reason to differ, differ with his opinion, I'm in favor too.
Okay, your motion, you have a second, alright, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all the recommendation, so, right, so we're in Bath Savings, so thank you guys for coming in. But we're in Bath Savings. So thank you guys for coming in. Yeah, good to hang out for a exciting meeting. There's more. Oh, there's more. You wanna hang out with Diane? All right, thank you guys. So, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Tom's gonna go, right? Yeah, yeah. So we can go.
The um.
We have.
The assessors.
Yeah, yeah, we have the revale. And yeah, I just want to make sure, if you've got time to go, are you gonna get going?
I'm, I'm for KJP, his recommendation.
Yeah, okay. So if you're fine with us moving, going through the rest of these, we'll just, we'll keep going on. We've got two more, two more um RFPs here, so.
I mean, I like Hager on Miles.
Yeah, there were some questions on some of the contractors on that one. So, all right, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll cruise along. So Tom, you get out of here before you get in trouble.
Thank you.
And uh, yeah, let's move into um the revale RFPs. Yeah, yeah. So, um, Andy, I think last, uh, last meeting we talked about, um, or communications with just uh, uh, checking up on like the the software and stuff and. Sounds like there's still some questions, but. Yeah, scope of service.
Yeah, yeah, this was not, I mean, it, it, I spent a fair amount of time, you know, trying to track down other, you know, colleagues. I mean, they proved did KRT and RJD did provide a, a list of who they're working with, who they have and who they are working with, looking ahead. To be honest, I didn't spend a lot of time calling the towns that were on RJD's list. I mean, I, I was leaning towards KRT based on price they, they quoted it, timeframe they would complete it in, and the fact that they were offering to complete everything we asked. You know, RJD was not looking and willing to provide the full revale service on personal property. I did ask why. Um, and Rob had said that based on the work that we're having done now to try and pick up the additional and missing potentially missing accounts. Um. He thought that that it was seen as dup, it was duplicative service. Um, I, I feel like the revale work on personal property is to make sure that the lists that are being voluntarily submitted are true and accurate. Um, which could be demanded at any time. Um, but if we're doing the revale work, I mean, it's like taking the same thing for granted on a, on a regular parcel, that all the buildings that are there are accurate and until you go out and field check it. You just assume they are until someone's, until someone says, well, I've taken that building down two years ago. Why am I still being taxed for it? And that's usually why and how it happens. So I do feel like, you know, we've asked for that. I think there are discrepancies and, and reasons to make sure that that is a fair and accurate list or true and accurate list. And and if we're doing the full revale, they're going to those parcels anyways. Um, so just go in and, and entertain the possibility of looking at what's in there. Um, and it's forty thousand dollars cheaper to do that.
Yeah, I know. And it seems like their software that they use is far superior to.
Almost every single assessor, um, if I talk to a town manager, you know, they might have been more involved in it, but in most cases, a lot of these folks I called were assessors. Um, and almost all of them said they prefer the Patriot software over the Trio for assessing. The only, the only challenge and I wasn't able to get great confirmation of is how this bridge solution works to be able to take your assessing database and put it into our collections and billing and collections database. There is a bridge solution for the assess, real estate assessing. Uh, people that, towns that use vision assessing software still use Trio for billing. And so there's a bridge that exists and it's very similar to what that bridge is from going from vision to, to Trio. And so that is the same thing. They're, they're still working on building the bridge for personal property. Can't tell you why it's different from the software engineer's perspective. I'm sure it's very simple. Um, but they need to make that bridge for personal property still. So um, either way. Devils in the details on the contract essentially, but I would expect that KRT would have to put that data into our personal property portal or module to be able to then do the billing if the bridge doesn't exist. And so we'd have to make sure that before we sign the contract that that is clear to us how they're doing that, whether it's manual entry or, or whatever. And whether we continue with the Assess Pro or Patriot software, the software cost annually is cheaper than Trio by two thirds. Um, we just need to feel good about the software in the next three years catching up with the demand. Um, more towns are starting to look at it. I mean, every town KRT works with, they do all the work in. At least going forward, are doing the work in Assess Pro. Whether a town chooses to then enter the data into themselves or, or just buy into the Assess Pro and manage both, um, they can do, but a couple of towns that are a little like for twenty twenty seven, uh Durham plans on just trying to eliminate Trio completely. And there are a couple of companies out there that are pushing hard to come into Maine and, and offer an alternative solution to Trio, which I think almost any town would be open to if it existed, but it doesn't yet. And so it's a lot of, so what Durham's doing is they're putting up like a I don't know, five or fifteen thousand dollar basically deposit to hold their spot, lock in a price while the software gets built to connect to. The problem is connecting the interface with like the state of Maine and, you know, the motor vehicles registration. When you come in, it might seem simple on the backend, on the software side, like Trio needs to communicate with the state's database. And so they need to make those links and those connections as Trio has done over the years. Um, so that's still in the works. Not many, I think they've got a handful of towns that have kind of committed, which allows that company now to, to do some of that legwork. Um, the price, if you come in later, is gonna be substantial. But in that case, I'd say let someone else figure it out with, with Assess Pro. It's already there. It's already being used in mass and New Hampshire. Towns in Maine are using it, whether they fully utilize it or not. Again, Cape Elizabeth is one I'd point to, is I know they've got the public portal online. You can go and see what it looks like. I, I do have pause, but I, I know technology changes very quickly. Software changes daily. Um, and I gotta believe that within, by the time we, we launch and need to do bills in twenty twenty eight, that the solution will be there for personal property. They are working with Trio actively on that.
It doesn't look like it's a dead software that's all.
Right.
Yeah, it's supported. Okay, so. Yeah, assessors agent has not worked with it, so they're gonna have to essentially learn how to use it.
It sounds like it's in a fair number of towns already. They've run into it.
It's growing. It's, it is smaller, but it's growing. I think, you know, again, we're, we're the first town listed as twenty twenty eight and there's I think twenty towns ahead or fifteen towns ahead of us between now and then that they're gonna be working in. Um, Noble Borough is working through a revale right now with them. But they chose to stay with Trio. They, they had to negotiate a higher cost for the, for the, that company to work in Trio. But again, they negotiated that back in twenty-two, probably twenty-three. Um, so it's just not something for contracts that they're looking to fulfill for twenty twenty-eight. They're not entertaining the work.
No, they want to stick with the software.
But even the, what is it, forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars, even if you have, even if the interval's five thousand, ten thousand, you're still far ahead.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the scope is there in the timeline.
The technology's better, right, so.
I mean, I'd love the idea in terms of cutting costs and working in a better program if we can. It might not be the full two thirds. It might be fifty percent because there might be pieces of the, the Trio software we have to keep to be able to do the billing accurately. But it's gonna be. Probably half of the cost we're paying. So it's still savings. And it's a better platform.
Right.
Whether or not the board decides to make the tax cards available through a public lookup. It's public data now. You can come in, anyone can come in and ask for a property card and anyone's account. Some towns are very cautious about making it as a public lookup like that. I don't see the problem in it. Um, it's all publicly accessible.
It's public knowledge, yeah.
It's like we're giving floor plans of the, it's just a footprint of the building. That's all it is. They're not like blueprints of what's in the house or some, someone's not getting into that.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha.
Well, if you're looking for, you're looking for a recommendation, I, I think we recommend we go with KRT. I do too.
All right, so Dan's gonna make a motion to, um, yeah, you recommend, uh, to go with the KRT. And then, um, do you, do you need in this motion to um negotiate contracts?
I would recommend it. Um, that's what comes next. I mean, I would.
Yeah.
Bring it to the board just to make sure you see it. I'd want our attorney to look at it.
Allow the town manager, I don't, I'm not trying to speak, because I know I get, I, I help with these sometimes too, so. So accept their, their RFP and then negotiate, allow Dan as a ti- town manager to negotiate contract with them, so. All right, cool. That's what you said.
That's exactly what I said.
You got all that? It's fine, I sound just like Dan, don't I? So, oh, this is, we help each other out sometimes. Cause some of the, some of the motions, yeah. All right, uh, I'll, uh, I'll second unless you want to. All right, I got a second on that one. All those in, yeah, discussion, all those in favor? Okay, let's move along with KRT and, and get that happen. So, sounds good.
No, we're talking about doing a, um, a business license registration. And it seems like we'd wanted to get that in place before we really start doing the, the personal property tax piece, right? Cause wouldn't that give us a sense of what the businesses are in, a better sense of?
Which personal property tax piece you think?
Well, we're doing the, the, part of the, the, the revale is looking at personal property.
Right.
As well. But, and so if we had a listing of where all the businesses were, business registration, that would actually give us a list to cross check against, right?
Um, I mean, it would be a list to cross check against to make sure we got them all in the database, in the assessing database. Um, but if they're gonna visit every property as part of the revale anyways to assess real estate. They're gonna presumably do the same thing I'm doing when you're there and say, oh, there's a business sign out here. Let me go inside. Or it's an open sign. Let me go check out what's in the, inside here.
But it might be a cross check.
It would be.
A nice, a nice cross check that way. Yeah. Yeah, and I was just doing the, just back of the envelope math. Let's say it's just a hundred dollars per business and there's five hundred businesses if we include Airbnbs. That's fifty thousand dollars. Let's say there's your revenue.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's definitely some revenue there, so, yeah.
On that piece. That's not even counting the personal.
I really, I agree, we need to move forward with that.
It's, it's a, yeah, and it's a bigger discussion, because I think, you know. Uh, there's gonna be pushback on it. Um, you know, absolutely be prepared for that, but, but I'm just, I'm just saying, it's a general discussion, so, but. But there's some, yeah, there's some merits to both sides of it, so, yeah.
But my pushback might be just anticipating it. Would be is that, you know, we are a service center. We are a service center for this whole area. And one of the, the benefit, and one of, in this additional costs, like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Significant costs.
I mean, our town has to foot all of that cost of having all the people come into it as a service center.
Yeah, I did, I did talk to Dennis and Miss Cassett. They are actively working through their ordinance, which is actually a one-time registrant currently.
Okay.
Uh, when businesses open up, um, there has not been a fee. They are working through right now the revisions to that ordinance that it would be an annual licensed fee. Um, if approved. So they, you know, and I, I love, you know, the, they, they're working through the process to bring in all the different department heads to understand like who needs what at what time. So the assessor needs to know when the business opens up so they can get a, you know, unfortunately, get this true and perfect list, uh, to request. Put all the taxable items on there. Again, this is a state statute that we have to do that. Um, the fire department, the fire chief wants to know if you're opening a light industrial manufacturing space or, or business, like are there combustible things that I need to know about that our fire department should know is in, in here? Is there's electric, um, battery storage on your facility, things that are very important for a firefighting effort to know before they go rushing in. If you have the chance to learn that ahead of time. Um, the police department, we currently hand out, uh, forms, um, asking for contact information for businesses in town. So when a new business comes in, they're already doing that anyways, you know, so they'd be able to access contact information from, so there's a lot of different reasons why it's important to be able to make that connection. Um, some towns do some sort of business recognition program through the town that the board has an opportunity to recognize a business who's been in town for thirty years or, you know, recognize a new business every year that opened up that. And so there's opportunities to make a connection with the business community that we aren't currently, if you want to go through that.
Yeah, definitely needs to have some value added there for, to get people on board, because it's sure, but yeah, it's a big discussion.
It could send flowers on mainstream.
Payment in lieu of flowers? All right, yeah, good, good question. So, um, yeah, we do have, uh, yeah, what do we have? A final RFP here, right?
The Mile Street.
Mile Street, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I did talk to Andy earlier, I.
I have a question.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
So when I was looking at the list of people that were sent this to bid on, Whitcomb wasn't on the list. How did they get in there?
Um, it was available on our website, on MMA. I mean, we made it publicly available. You weren't required to check it ahead of time. This was just the list that the engineer knew had asked for plan sets, but it wasn't required. It was available.
Interesting that they weren't on the list and they.
Yep.
Trussed to bid on it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, numbers are obvious. Um. Whitcomb Contracting, um, do we still have some questions, some backgrounds that you want to do on that?
Um, I can just read what.
We have something back from engineering.
Right before we started the budget, the, you know, the, the meeting tonight, um, and our engineer did reach out and provide a recommendation. He was trying to track down some information references that we didn't ask for ahead of time. Um, cause he, he personally hadn't worked with them. His company, Gartley and Dorsky, has worked with them on.
So, yeah, so his, his company has. He hasn't personally, but his company has, okay.
They've worked with him on some smaller projects, this is from his email, also smaller projects, including, including residential site work and shoreline stabilization. Their experience working with them was positive. They respond promptly to communications and never saw any change orders, uh, for minor field adjustments. We've not worked with them on a larger road project, um, that included reconstruction, granite curbing and water main replacement. Contacted the, uh, Lyndon, uh, who was the contact on the form, uh, to discuss their capabilities and requested they provide references. Um, the conversation indicated that they had successfully completed several more extensive projects, including curbing and ductile iron pipe. Um, indicated that a project they had hoped to get started on in the spring fell through. Um, so they had a window open to slide the project into.
Yeah.
They confirmed they are fully insured, have proper bonding.
Okay.
Um, and clearly understood that this was a lump sum project. Uh, based on this conversations and correspondence uh, in G and D's, uh, previous limited experience, um, and the additional information. Um, they are recommending them for the project. He does suggest having a project rep available for oversight. Uh, which I would strongly encourage as well.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
That's a separate, uh, piece, but I did ask them to provide, Gartley and Dorsky to provide us with a, a quote for doing that. But they are recommending them as a responsive low bidder.
Okay.
To go forward. I am still waiting. Um, for what it's worth, this is a project that we are sharing with the hospital. Um, it's, it's our contract to sign and oversee, but, um, I did, you know, share this with them and I haven't heard back for a final answer from Brooks, um, as to whether. Um, I mean, obviously on the waterline work, there's, you know, varying costs there. Um, you know, we're asking essentially to sign a contract with a higher cost to them. You know, I did say I'm not sure how the fifteen thousand dollar, two hundred and thirty, roughly two hundred and thirty feet can be done for that. The insertion valves to tap into the live water main at Bristol Road, that when they had to do that on the first phase, I think it was twelve grand for the one on the hospital end. Um, and so there's, I, I think Brooks was okay with, with us going with it. Generally within their budget, the piece that I'm not sure about is the bid alt one. They're interested in doing the lighting as part of this, if they can um, get the approval to use, use their funds towards it. They'd rather do it while everyone's on site. Um, so I just haven't gotten a final confirmation on that. We are still waiting to hear if the sixty grand is still available that was committed when we did this almost two years ago, um, for the sidewalk.
All right.
Okay, and that's a, and that's an individual.
Yeah, that would pass through the hospital. Um, but they had provided thirty grand towards the first phase for the sidewalk to be raised granite sidewalk. They offered up to sixty for the second phase to make sure that was done as well. So we're just getting confirmation.
Do you want to wait then?
I would recommend waiting for the hospital, just to confirm where they stand, but just know that the engineers are comfortably recommending Whitcomb as.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's reassuring. They're, they're not excited. Yeah, they, it was a, I've never heard of them, so it's, it's fine, but it's, we can get some, some vetting. So, yeah, because we've got bid alternatives and stuff on there, so we don't know which one to, yeah, so if we, if you want to wait until we get confirmation of funds and, and whatnot, we can, um. We don't want to sit on it too long, so we have a budget meeting next Wednesday, right? So if you have things ready by then, we could do, uh, you, I talked about this earlier, we could do a, um, special board meeting. Yeah, and, and move something if need be, so.
I am hopeful that we'll know by the end of this week, so I think.
Yeah, be.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, get, just get it out to us, but, um, okay, that's good. At least, you know, that's, that's comforting that the contract, the engineer has, their company has worked with them, so. Not a complete unknown, but it was interesting to see the, you know, the numbers come back low and.
Yep.
And, uh, and the date, the timelines, good.
They'd be able to add, two of them said they would complete it by June thirty.
Right, yeah.
Crooker, you know, it's not that they necessarily wouldn't, but they did say by November thirtieth for sure. Andrew, when he sees those come in, it doesn't mean that they wouldn't get it done by July. I just say that we allowed that opportunity to go longer.
Yeah.
Our preference would be to get it done before July and just be done with it.
We like to get it done as quick as possible, yeah. So, okay. All right, so we'll table that for now, um, until, uh, next week and then Josh may want to weigh in on that too, so. Um, you may have some questions on it, but we get information back from the hospital and whatnot on, uh, on funding, so. Great.
Yep.
All right, we'll table that for right now and what was the, yeah, the MD, the M dot. Wait allowance.
Oh my gosh, there was so many. I just kept reading page after page of the wait allowance. It's like, how many pages does it take to tell us this?
I think realistically, I don't even think it's out to bid yet. Um, we don't typically post the roads in. Um, we don't typically post the roads in the late fall months, um, typically, if they're posted right now. Um, I I don't see. Frankly seeing it be an issue, I I don't see it being a problem if you do this, because you can still require the bond, though if damages are done. And you're waiving the the, you know, allowing them to go on your posted roads, but we would still have the right to. Ask for the bond if that's gonna happen, and I think we should.
Right.
Uh, Belvedere Road's the only one I think that would be impacted. All the rest of the roads they are coming on would likely be state aid, which aren't posted anyways.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're gonna be working on the roundabout down there, so they're gonna have to be on Belvedere Extension, which is. Actually not currently posted, uh, we're gonna just wait and see how that thought comes in, whether we need to or not. I know it's used by commercial trucks that don't want to go up above.
Absolutely.
So we're monitoring that one and we're monitoring Mid Coast Road, but all the rest of the local roads are posted right now.
Yeah.
But just the way they've brought it forward, it would require, it looks to me, a vote of of the board, um. So if you're open to.
Yeah, are you, I mean, we, yeah, we're satisfied that we're covered if anything, yeah. Yeah, it's okay, um, yeah, I'll make a motion to, I guess I approve that?
Oh.
I'd say to to sign the.
To sign, yeah, to sign the, uh, M dot restricted weight allowance, um, agreement.
Okay.
Yeah. On page thirty-nine?
Only on page thirty-nine?
Well. The signature's on page thirty-nine, so.
It was a lot, yeah, okay. Um, I would do that, you, it says we may require, and I just, you know. Consider authorizing the signature of of this allowance, but to also require a a bond.
It's, yeah.
If they're gonna be operating on posted roads.
Okay, so I'm gonna, yeah, I'll, I'll add that to my motion, so I'll approve the agreement, um, with the addition that, uh, we we require a bond if they're operating on. Posted roads, they good and cover us, okay? Sounds good, uh, second? Dan was quick on you, he got that one, so, all right, uh, Dan's second, any, uh, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we're good there, so, um, all right. So that one, that one, and do we have a copy of that Andy suffered in here, or is that one? I can pull. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, I think that is all our business, right? We've tabled, uh, Mile Street until hopefully next week.
Mm-hmm.
And any, so any discussion items, anybody?
No, I think we're talking.
Open floor.
I think we're talking.
Yeah, I think we did, I think we did. Andrew, you good?
All right, I will not add to the, uh, the fun here at all, I'm good. So, um, well, anything else, Andy? Doesn't sneak in right at the end? Well, there, all right, I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
All right, I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion during, Andrew's gonna. It's like making somebody else do it. Andrea's seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we are so adjourned, we need to sign.